It's Monday, October 26. Welcome. We will start with the call to order, which I just did, and the Pledge of Allegiance. Tom, would you lead us in that?
Ready? Yeah.
My pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Planner, would you go ahead and do the roll call, please?
Thank you. Good evening, Chairperson Rosales.
President.
Vice Chair Bauma.
President.
Commissioner Busk.
Here.
Commissioner Morrissey.
Here.
Commissioner Custer indicated she would be absent tonight. Commissioner Crayhill, I believe, is joining us via Zoom. Can you?
I can hear.
Can you hear us okay, Kyle?
Yeah, can I hear you?
And likewise, Commissioner Goodkind is going to join us by Zoom. And Robin, can you hear us okay?
I'm present. Thank you. Yes, I can hear you.
So for the record, you have six members present. Two are attending via Zoom.
Great, thank you. Okay, we'll go to communications not on the agenda. I don't see anything listed here, but I'll turn to the planner. Anything come up later? Do we not have anything that's on this item?
Mr. Chairman, we have no items under Item 1 or 2, communications on matters not on the agenda.
Great, thank you. So we'll go to approval of minutes from our last meeting, which is a while back, August 24. Approval of minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
On Zoom.
Aye abstained. I wasn't at the meeting.
Thank you.
So we'll mark that as five in favor and one abstention. Commissioner Goodkind.
Thank you. Consent calendar. We also have nothing on tonight's agenda, nor transportation. So we'll go right to public hearing. We have several items tonight, starting with Item Number 4, which is consideration of a tentative parcel map, development map, and regular coastal permit to allow demolition of an existing California bungalow, a single-family resident, and then to construct a three-story over basement garage condominium project at 819 South Tremont. It is in the coastal zone. I'll ask for disclosures, starting with over my right, Vice Chair Bauma.
Thank you. I read the staff report. I did a site visit, and I also got comments from citizen.
Thank you. Commissioner Busk.
The same as Commissioner Bauma. And also, I would include that this is in my neighborhood, but it is some thousand yards or so from my house. So it's outside of my economic zone.
Thank you. Commissioner Morrissey.
I made a site visit, reviewed the materials.
Thank you. Commissioner Goodkind.
Site visit and reviewed the materials.
Thank you. And Commissioner Crayhill.
Nothing to disclose.
Thank you. My disclosures, I read the materials. We got some email information on this as well, and I'm familiar with the area. All that, I will turn it over to Richard Greenbauer, who will walk us through this. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Rosales. Vice Chair Bauma, members of the Planning Commission here this evening, those joining us by Zoom. Now, we have a large agenda, so I'll be brief on my presentation tonight with this new format. Hopefully, we can get this through painlessly. We do have a request for a tentative map, a development plan, and regular coastal permit. Kind of feel like a broken record here because that is the form of development that's occurring throughout this portion of Oceanside. It seems like I've brought 20 of these to you probably in the last year. So in keeping with that, we do have another demolition of an old bungalow and then redevelopment of the site with three condominium units at 819 South Tremont. I've provided a quick overview of the existing 1,200-square-foot house. You can see there is a curb cut along South Tremont that has been conditioned that will be closed, and access to the site will come off the alley. So that'll provide additional on-street parking for the area. The three-story, three-unit condominium complex will be in a single building. It'll total 7,900 square feet. The next image I have provided for you this evening is a overview from the aerial view showing the existing block of Tremont Street. The block is split in zoning with commercial to the north and high-density residential to the south. So this project is zoned high-density residential, urban high-density, and has an R3 coastal zoning land use plan designation. The development standards for the site require a minimum 1,500 square feet per unit. They're proposing three, so that brings a density of 26.1 deus per acre and the max unit capability for the lot of three units. Parking spaces are being provided via six spaces in a tandem configuration. And then you can see the other development standards and how they do apply the standards, even though the site is a existing non-conforming site as far as the lot width goes. They were able to make it conform. You see the 34-feet, three stories, over basement and garage. I'll provide some additional illustras that show that they're providing balconies, but no rooftop decks as part of this proposal. And working with the architect and the applicant over the period since 2018 on this project, they have refined the project to bring forward a more modern-style architectural design that incorporate the board and batten, corrugated metal roof, and some newer black iron railing to bring forth a very simplistic and modern-type design to the area. We've also had the applicant provide a neighborhood massing study of the area. You can see that it does exist in a block that's commingled with commercial, so non-conforming commercial to the south as well as non-conforming residential to the north, and then additional commercial in the surrounding area. Immediately across Tremont to the east is a strictly commercial, and that's where we have a lot of parking lots, commercial retail. So this will be a nice transition and redevelopment of the site as the Tremont street scape is changed over the next few years. I did provide a cross-section illustrative just for everyone's edification, showing how the grade exists and how they're going to do a subterranean basement-style parking and then pick up an additional room subsurface. And then they'll have three stories above that. All units will be four bedrooms, three baths. With that, staff recommends the Planning Commission confirm issuance of an infill exemption and approve the tentative map, development plan, and coastal permit by adopting the attached resolution. And I'm available for any questions.
Any questions for staff? Yeah, go ahead. Vice Chair Bauma.
Thank you. I'm a little bit confused because on those pictures you just showed us, there was the elevations, front and back and rear. If you go to the rear one, can you scroll back to that? Or no, is that possible?
Is that what you're looking for? The alley?
Yes, thank you. I just didn't see it on my screen, sorry. You see how the garages are? Actually, there was another one that you showed that showed the fence of the guy that's right next door was right at the same plane as those garage doors were, which from the map, from the plans we got, it shows that the garage doors are actually set back from the alley because there's actually a parking space with a planter that I saw. Is that?
That's correct.
Okay, so that?
The plans are correct on there. The illustrative's just showing the overall architectural design.
So that was not correct, what we saw in the?
The illustrative.
Okay, thank you. That was just my question.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioners on Zoom, any questions from you?
Nope.
Not seeing any. Thank you, Richard. This is, we do have a different opportunity tonight for the public to participate. They too can participate via Zoom. So I'll look to staff to tell me if we have any, the public that's willing to, wanting to weigh in on this comment. And I think the same will apply the three-minute rule. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, Chairman. Any public speakers limited to three minutes tonight? We do not have any citizens who requested to speak on this particular agenda item.
Okay. How about the applicant? We have an applicant that is wanting to address this, or?
The applicant did not inform me they would be presenting a project before you this evening. They would be available for questions. Scott, have they logged in?
I don't see them on here, no.
Okay.
Mr. Taylor, are you logged into the Zoom meeting?
I am.
Here is Larry. I'll unmute him. Go ahead, Larry.
Yeah, I'm just here to answer any questions you might have on the project in general, particularly the civil engineering elements of it. And I see Chris Hall is also logged into the call. He's the architect on the project. So architectural questions you have, you can direct to him. But we do not have a presentation to make.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant or their consultant? Okay, then we will close the public hearing portion of this item and take it back for deliberation. Any other questions, comments, or do we want to go to a motion? Go ahead. Vice Chair Bauma.
Well, thank you. One thing I noticed, and we notice a lot of this when we go drive down to go look at these properties, the overhead utilities, especially in this alley, are just tremendously, you know, obtrusive, right? They're just there in our face. And of course, I'm sure this project pays to the underground utility fund, and that's the way we've done this for years. But do you actually record the money that these properties are paying so that in the future that particular alley might get undergrounded if all of these properties start to like pay into that fee? Or do they just go into a slush fund with the city and it just stays with whatever project the city will use it for?
Vice Chair Bauma, I don't want to speak on behalf of engineering. Do we have engineering available via Zoom before I speak?
I don't believe so.
Okay. In light of them not being here and just the past history of working for the city, the funds are brought in. I don't know exactly how the accounts are set up for that. But then they would come in and do it in one large swath rather than piecemealing underlying or undergrounding utilities on a 50-foot lot and then having, you know, another 100 feet above ground.
I totally understand why this project wouldn't be required to do that. But I know that years passed. I think it was engineering that actually let us know that. We were told that that fund, it just goes into a fund, and that fund is used for wherever the city needs to do it the most. It doesn't necessarily come back to this particular alley, even though the projects may have all paid into it. So to me, it kind of seems a little unfair that you don't address each street as they develop. But I think that just, it's probably too much for an accounting, and it's probably too much of a nightmare to keep track of everything. But I just wanted to see if maybe anything changed since those years ago.
Vice Chair, I'll relay the comment to the engineering division and have the city engineer provide you with a written comment on that.
Thank you.
Chair and commissioners, the practice is common for all our impact fees. You commonly hear it from the public regarding parks. There's a park impact fee that's paid, and yet they don't get a park in their neighborhood. The council collects that money, and it's political, and they use the money as they think best for the city at that time.
Presumably, in your example, it would go to a park at some point when enough's collected to do a park in one of the districts as opposed to just paying for a new truck or something like that, I would assume.
Yeah. Our legal counsel can correct me if I'm wrong. I think they're earmarked for a specific use. It's just not they're earmarked for that district.
Right.
In theory, through time, things would even out, in theory.
Yeah. They probably have a priority list or something along those lines, and that gets dealt with first. Squeaks allowed us, yeah. Okay. We, I'm looking for a motion on this item, if anybody would like to tee one up.
Now, I'll move that we confirm issuance of a categorical exemption per Secret Guidelines, Article 19, Section 15332, for infill development projects, and approve the tentative map, P18408 Development Plan, D183021 Regular Coastal Permit, DRC183017, adopting Resolution 2020P29, with findings and conditions of approval attached.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Busk and a second by Commissioner Morrissey. Any further discussion? If not, let's go ahead and vote. All those signifying aye, please raise your hand. And those on Zoom, commissioners on Zoom, if you could give us an audible yea or nay?
Yea for me.
Also a yea for me.
Thank you. Hey Planner, if you would call back the motion results.
Thank you, Chairman. We'll record that as six in favor, zero against, and Commissioner Custer absent.
Thank you. We'll move on to Item Number 5 then. Item 5 is consideration of a tentative parcel map and regular coastal permit for two-lot residential subdivision of a 1.17-acre site located at Horn and Nevada Street. Disclosures. Vice Chair Bauma.
I had the staff report, and I did a site visit.
Commissioner Morrissey.
I did a site visit. Dr. Sicaria was my doctor, but he's retired. He's not my doctor any longer. And I met a couple there that are contiguous homeowners, and so I got to talk to that couple, a very nice couple, and I read the materials.
Thank you. Commissioner Busk.
I read the staff report and visited the site. I'm also the president of the Buena Vista Audubon Society. We have property on the lagoon, but it is probably 400 or 500 yards from this particular site. So there shouldn't be any conflict of interest.
Okay. Commissioner Crayhill.
I have nothing to disclose.
And Commissioner Goodkind.
Yes, so I drove by the site, read the staff materials, and am reading the email that was just sent to us a few minutes ago from Richard Greenbauer.
Thank you. And I read the materials, drove by the site. I too have an email in front of me that looks like it came from staff. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Greenbauer for his presentation.
Great. Chairman Rosales, Vice Chair Bauma, members of the Planning Commission, those in attendance via Zoom tonight. Second item I have this evening is a lot subdivision of a single lot into two. It requires a tentative parcel map and a regular coastal permit. I'll give a brief history of the project. Hold on one sec. All right. So the property currently holds a coastal residential land use designation and is zoned R1, which is a small zoning for the site. This was previously approved, the subdivision of the three lots, back in '97. So it's been a while. And the applicant has come forth with a larger parcel where they have an existing house to further subdivide that and create one additional lot. The subject map that I provided for you shows the existing easement for the three lots as approved in 1997, coming off of Nevada Street, and then a flag lot configuration across parcels 1, 2, and what'll be parcel A, that'll be subdivided as part of this request. You can see that the total lot size is 50,000 square feet, and they will be subdivided into 23,000 and 27,000 square feet accordingly. Let me go back to the map real quick. I want to highlight the fact that you can see at the bottom of the map, it's a little unclear off the image here, but with your handouts, there is existing, with the original map, there's existing open-space easements that were recorded against all properties. Those will be maintained. And the applicant moved forward with a mitigated NEG deck to further document if there's been any additional habitat that's established on-site and to ensure that those open-space easements are maintained and impacts are appropriately mitigated once development of these sites comes forward. Each of the sites are in the appealable jurisdiction of the coastal zone and will require that a development plan be brought forward to this commission and appealable to this full California Coastal Commission at a later date should they come in for development. With that, I've provided a brief overview showing the required standards for the subdivision. 6,000-square-foot minimum is the lot size that's required for the coastal zoning ordinance. And they have provided that. And the buildable pad areas are all well above 6,000 square feet. I know there's a lot of sloping land down to the Buena Vista lagoon, but those will be maintained in perpetuity as open space. The setbacks, I provided a brief overview of the front yard setbacks. Parcel A has existing house, which is 19 feet from the property line, and Parcel B will maintain a 25-foot minimum setback as per the code. As far as the side yard and rear yards, those as well will be maintained consistent with the zoning ordinance. Staff's recommendation on this two-lot subdivision would be to adopt the first resolution, adopting a mitigated NEG deck along with the mitigation monitoring reporting program by adopting Planning Commission Resolution 2020P30. And the second action would be to approve the tentative parcel map and regular coastal permit by adopting Planning Commission Resolution Number 2020P31. And staff is available for any questions or comments at this time. The applicant has not stated that he had a presentation for this since it is a simple two-lot subdivision. Do you see Mr. Bukola online?
Bukola is online. He hasn't requested to speak, but we can have him if needed.
Okay, so we do have the applicant's representative, Mr. Phil Bukola, the engineer, online if there's any comments for them.
Thank you, Richard. Any questions for staff at this point? Commissioner Busk.
Yeah, just one fairly easy question, I hope. This came with quite an extensive final mitigated negative declaration that has a number of mitigation issues that need to be tracked over time. Does the city have a process to make sure that all that documentation stays with these subdivisions as they go forward?
That's correct. As part of the adoption of the resolution for the mitigated NEG deck, you'll create that paper trail, and then it'll be recorded against the property.
So if I come in to buy one of these properties from the outside, is the seller required to transfer all that paperwork to me prior to the time I buy the property?
That's correct. And there's a standard planning condition in the resolution that articulates that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioners on the Zoom call, any questions for staff?
No.
Okay, thank you. Again, like the last item, this is a public hearing, so we will open it up to the public if there's anybody in the public that would like to comment on this.
Mr. Chairman, we had no request to speak via Zoom. Richard did send an email from Janine Tinsley, and I hope everyone had time to read that. It did get to you a little bit late. Richard had some other obligations this afternoon. If you want to take a minute, it's up to you folks.
Yeah, actually, I started to go through it. Maybe it'd be more effective, Richard, if you would maybe kind of characterize what's in there. I don't know if everybody's had the opportunity to read through that.
Chairman Rosales, I've briefly, I've been, we've been working with Janine over the period of this, since this project's middle in 2018. There has been, there was some misinformation out on the site as far as what was coming forward. The main concern was the fact that they would use Nevada as the sole access to all four lots. As I had previously shown in the, get back to the map here, previously shown, the flag lot configuration that was approved with the original map is for the three lots. So the flag lot configuration would not go further east. The new lot along Horn Street would access via Horn with a typical residential driveway, not a street or access easement.
Thank you. I do see in the email there's some concern about habitat that might have been, I want to use the wrong word, but bulldozed. I don't know if there's anything to substantiate that, but that's the claim made here.
With the M&amp;D in the materials, I believe I sent those out about a month in advance, so you'd have adequate time to review those documents. A biological study was conducted. Nothing within that study dictated that previous scrubbing or clearing of any habitat had occurred. So all I can do is go off the report that was submitted as part of that document.
Okay, that's fair. Thank you. Seeing nobody, any comments from the public, then we'll close that portion of the public. And I may have taken this out of order, but the applicant is also given the opportunity to do a presentation. I think we have Mr. Bukola on the Zoom call. I don't know if he had a stated presentation ready or just was ready for any questions. Any questions for the applicant by the commissioners? No, don't see any. Okay. We'll close the public hearing then and bring it back for any further comments, deliberation, or a motion, whatever your choice might be. I see that Vice Chair Bauma would like to make a motion. Go ahead.
First, I'd like to just comment on that. That neighborhood is such a nice neighborhood at Oceanside. I mean, I love driving around and through that area. So it's a wonderful place to, you know, to actually provide another residence. So I would like to make a motion to adopt a mitigated negative declaration and associated mitigation monitoring and reporting program by adopting the Planning Commission Resolution Number 2020P30 and approve the tentative parcel map and regular coastal permit by adopting the Planning Commission Resolution Number 2020P31, with the findings and conditions of approval attached herein.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second from Commissioner Busk. Any further comments or question? Commissioners on the Zoom call, anything before we?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll take a vote then. All those in favor of this, of the motion, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you.
For the record, we'll mark that as six in favor and zero against.
Okay, moving on then to item. I feel like my mic isn't on anymore, is it? It's on. Okay, moving on to Item 6. Item 6 is consideration of a development plan, conditional use permit, historic permit, and variance to allow the demolition of existing buildings and structures on-site and the construction of a mixed-use development. This is all taking place on Douglas Drive and Highway 76. The project titled is Mission Flats. Applicant is Mission Flats LLC. And Shannon Vitale, it will be our staff presenting tonight.
Yes, and I do have, on remind, resolution that I can pass.
Okay, while those are going around, we'll do disclosures. I read the materials, familiar with that area, driven by many times, and kind of always wondered what that property was. It looks like a piece of property from a bygone era. Interesting. And then we're getting some additional information that's being passed on right now. And then we're getting some additional information that's being passed on right now. Vice Chair Bauma?
I also really enjoy looking at that site and wondering what it was all about, but for years. But we, I had the staff report, did a site visit, and I was also on the design review committee, which we had several months ago with the applicant to go over this project.
Thank you. Commissioner Busk?
The same as Commissioner Bauma. I was also on that design review committee.
Thank you. Commissioner Morrissey?
Site visit and reviewed the materials.
Thank you. Commissioner Goodkind?
Site visit, reviewed, staff report, and I think we got some public communication. Did not, obviously, I'm not in receipt of whatever was just handed out to everybody.
Will we have that material available for the commissioners that are Zoom calling?
I can email it. Would that work?
Would that work for you?
Yes.
So we'll get those emailed to you. And then Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner Crayhill?
I was also on the design review committee, otherwise no disclosures.
Okay, and look for the email from staff here in just a bit as we work our way through this. With that, we will turn over the presentation to staff. Getting ready. No hurry.
Thank you. And then if I can just state quickly, Commissioners Goodkind and Crayhill, rather than emailing, I can point out the two revisions that have changed when we get to it.
If that's acceptable to the two commissioners, I think that might work pretty well as well.
Great, thank you. Okay, good evening, Chair Rosales, planning commissioners. I'm Shannon Vitale with the Planning Division. I'm here tonight to discuss the Mission Flats project. The project before you consists of a development plan, conditional use permit, historic permit, and variance to construct a 145,673 square foot mixed-use project. The development plan and conditional use permit are to approve a mixed-use plan consisting of residential and commercial uses on the same project. The historic permit is required because the project is located within the San Luis Rey Historic District, and a variance is required to allow portions of the proposed retaining wall to exceed the maximum allowable height. The 4.73 acre site, which is outlined in red on this slide, is located at the northeast corner of Douglas Drive and Highway 76. The site was once part of the Jones Ranch, and there are several barn structures and other ancillary buildings remaining. A historical assessment was done on the site and indicated the remaining structures are not historically significant. Surrounding uses include the Mission Douglas Plaza Shopping Center to the north, the Mission Plaza Real Shopping Center to the west, and Highway 76 to the south. Situated within the San Luis Rey Neighborhood Planning Area, the subject property has a land use designation of special commercial and a zoning designation of special commercial limited with a historic overlay. As shown on this slide, the project area is located in the southwest portion of the Mission San Luis Rey Historic area. The San Luis Rey Mission is approximately a half mile away from the project site, and as indicated here, the site is outside the historic core. On June 18th, the applicant held a virtual design review committee with three of the planning commissioners. As described in the staff report, the DRC was generally supportive of the project, but had a few comments on how to revise the architecture to better incorporate the design criteria of the historic district. Suggested design revisions included adding additional tower elements to enhance the north and east elevations, revising the arcade and column features, and ensuring all proposed signage is consistent with the design guidelines. Following the DRC suggestions, the applicant refined the project to better comply with the design criteria. On August 11th, staff brought the project forward to the Oceanside Historic Advisory Committee, or OPAC, for their review and consideration. OPAC voted unanimously to recommend planning commission approval of the project and praised architectural design and adherence to the historic guidelines. The proposed mixed-use building is comprised of 3,500 square feet of commercial space, 4,200 square feet amenity area and leasing office, multiple courtyards and a dog park, as well as a pool. There are 137 apartments ranging in size from 454 square feet studio units to 1,100 square feet two-bedroom, two-bath units. Table one provides a breakdown of the residential units. Detailed floor plans were included as an attachment to the staff report. Access to the site is provided via 35-foot right-in, right-out entry on Douglas Drive. The commercial space occupies a portion of the first level of the building and is situated along the west-facing facade on Douglas. Sorry about that. Several courtyard areas are integrated into the site as well, as well as a 5,500 square feet dog park that's located at the eastern portion of the site. In total, the project includes approximately 35,000 square feet of common open space. There is approximately 6,000 square feet of private, there is approximately 6,000 square feet of private open space provided via balconies and patios. I would like to clarify that the total usable open space per dwelling does include both the common areas and the private areas, and some of the units do not have private usable space. There are 282 parking spaces, including 27 EV-ready spaces. Commercial parking spaces are concentrated near the west end of the site, adjacent to the commercial section. And the remaining parking spaces include resident and guest parking spaces, and they're scattered throughout the remainder of the site. The project does include enhanced landscape areas, especially along the Doug, keeps going by itself. It's not me. I'm not sure what's happening here. Okay. The project includes enhanced landscape areas, especially along the Douglas frontage. In addition to replacing any trees, we're having a glitch with her. Stay here. Sorry about that, there's a glitch. The applicant is proposing to plant 12 street trees in the bright of way along Douglas Drive. Hey, has a mind of its own today. The rendering on this slide provides a view from Douglas Drive. The commercial space is located on the ground floor and is characterized by high-volume ceilings and arched entryways. There is a 10-foot recessed arcade and a pedestrian walkway. The maximum height of the tower element is 60 feet. The apartments are located above the commercial space and are arranged in a stacked configuration. All units are accessed from interior courtyards and will open to the exterior via patios, balconies, or windows. This slide illustrates the south elevation of the building as viewed from Highway 76. Much of the existing landscaping along Highway 76 will be preserved and will serve to screen and soften the building. Here are the views looking northeast and northwest from the Mission Douglas Plaza Shopping Center. Emphasis was placed on carrying the Mission Revival style through to all elevations of the project. Staff has evaluated the project and finds it consistent with the general planned land use element in the following areas: balanced land use, housing, and historic areas and Per the city's general planned land use policy, the city shall monitor the impact and intensity of proposed land use to ensure that the city's circulation system is not overburdened beyond capacity. A traffic impact analysis was prepared for the project. The report analyzed existing and proposed conditions for six roadway segments and seven intersections in the project vicinity. The study states that no significant impacts would occur with the proposed project and all roadway segments, and all roadway segments would operate at a level of service D or better. This table illustrates that there is no change with the existing, with the existing project versus the current conditions. Staff has received, staff has received a public comment that was concerned with the impact the project will have on traffic flow on Douglas Drive. I did forward that comment to you this afternoon. As of 6 o'clock, that was the only comment staff had received. It should be noted that the traffic study was conducted and approved prior to the recent adoption of the SEQA vehicle miles traveled, or VMT, guidelines, and thus the project was not required to provide a VMT analysis. The proposed project is consistent with the housing goal of the general plan because it provides 100, sorry, our remote is having glitches. Okay, so the project's consistent with the housing goal of the general plan because it provides 137 rental apartments. The project establishes a multifamily development that provides smaller rental units, and thus would add to the variety of housing types available in the area. By contributing new units to the city's housing stock, the proposed project will help meet the projected housing demand. Since the project is located in the Mission San Luis Rey Historic area, the project is subject to the historic area design guidelines. Consistent with these design guidelines, the project was designed in the Mission Revival architectural style. Specifically, the project incorporates the following design features: single-barrel U-shaped red clay tile, smooth white succo walls and recessed window openings, a recessed arcade with arched entryways and column features, as well as a prominent wooden door entry further enhances the design. As shown on this slide, as shown on this slide and described in the staff report, the project complies with all of the applicable development standards for the CSLH district. I would like to note a correction in Table one in that the parking provided is 282 spaces, not 287. This still exceeds the minimum required. Due to the site's irregular shape and topography, deviations from some development standards, including parking setbacks and landscape perimeter areas, were included as part of the mixed-use plan. Staff supports the proposed deviations because of the site's constraints and the resulting superior design of the project. Additionally, a variance is requested to exceed the allowable retaining wall height, and I'll just describe that next. Due to the site's topography, a retaining wall exceeding six feet is required along portions of the site perimeter. The wall is necessary to support the grading and storm drainage for the site. The wall will vary in height with a maximum height of 15.9 inches viewable from the interior side of the wall. The exterior side of the wall, as viewed from Highway 76, will vary from one to four feet above grade. The wall materials consist of railroad ties and I-beam soldier piles, and the wall will be screened with trees, vines, and treps. Staff has determined that the project qualifies for a Class 32 infill exemption pursuant to SEQA because it meets the following criteria. The first is that the project is consistent with the general plan and the zoning designation. Second, the project site is less than five acres and is surrounded by urban uses. The third is that the biolog, the third is that the site has no value as habitat. There was a biological report prepared for the project that indicated the site has no value for habitat for endangered, rare, or threatened species. The technical reports for the project also indicate that there is no significant impact to traffic, noise, air quality, or water quality. We're having some technical issues with the slideshow. Sorry about the glitches. It should be noted that there were two conditions that were revised after posting the resolution online. I did distribute those to all the commissioners, and I can do an overhead for the commissioners that are attending via Zoom. The first is condition, it's still going on itself. The first is condition number 31, which is a fire condition. It's on page 10 of the resolution. No, just the, and the revised, revised condition is going to read, "Provide striping in the street with keep clear for emergency access to," with emerg, for emerg, let me read for you. Provide striping in the street with keep clear for emergency traffic to access the property. And this was per direction of the fire marshal. Since the project site is a one-way in, one-way out on Douglas Drive, they did require that the applicant has striping with the keep clear language in case there's emergency vehicles The second condition that was revised is an engineering condition. It's on page 22 of the resolution. It's condition number 90. And the change with this condition was per discussion with engineering staff. It's regarding the timing of issuance of the improvement, of approval of the improvement plans and the grading permit to coincide with Caltrans review and approval. Okay, so in conclusion, again, thank you for being patient with the slides, but staff does find that the project is consistent with the design guidelines of the historic district and feels the project will help to enhance and complement the area. Therefore, staff is recommending that the planning commission, by motion, confirm issuance of a categorical exemption per SEQA guidelines, Article 19, Section 15332, for infill development, and adopt and approve development plan D 19 00017, CUP 19 00022, historic permit H 19 002, and variance V 20 00004 by adopting Resolution number 2020 dash P 28. That concludes my presentation. I am available for questions. We also have the applicant and the project team on the line to answer any questions you may have, and the applicant did prepare a presentation. I can play one.
Thank you. I had two very simple questions. So I think I read an email that addressed the issue of a one-way in, one-way out only. So it looks like the, we're adding this language in the resolution with the keep clear, so that, that tells me the fire department took a look at it, and this would be kind of the secondary approach to not have that additional in-out location to simply use this kind of standard language.
Chair Rosales, planning commissioners, that is correct. Both the fire department, the traffic, and the traffic division reviewed and approved of those conditions. I believe the comment letter that you received also asked if OPD had reviewed, and they did review the plans and approve with the one-way in.
Good. And then the second question I had is, you made a comment about the number of charging stations, EV charging stations. I forgot what the number was, but does that, is that arbitrary, or is that a percentage of the overall parking that you land on that number?
So there are, Commissioner Rosales, planning commissioners, there are 27 EV parking stations. I, that was, I believe, an arbitrary number. I don't remember the percentage of EV parking spaces required, but I know that it is sufficient to meet the state requirements for EV.
Okay. Any questions from any other commissioners? Commissioner Busk?
Yeah, I've got a couple. So everyone's looked at these plans, and there's no need to have a second exit on the, it would be the east end of this property?
So Commissioner Busk, commissioners, that is correct in that the plans have been reviewed and approved by the fire department, traffic engineering, and the police department, and they all agree that this one-way in and out on Douglas Drive is sufficient. We do have the city's traffic engineer on the line if you have other questions or need a more detailed explanation.
I'm just a little worried if there's a fire in the middle of the complex, how do the people on that east side get out?
So the fire department did review the plans, including the fire marshal, and they all felt that there was adequate emergency egress.
Okay. And then the second question's a little more fundamental. Since this is an old ranch building spot, I would be absolutely amazed if there's not some highly contaminated soil on this piece of property. And as I read through the report, I didn't see any place where we're requiring them to treat contaminated soil in any particular way.
Mr. Busk, there was a biological report and some other technical studies that were done to evaluate the current conditions of the soil, and the applicant's consultant may better be able to speak to that if they did find any type of contaminated soil, but I'm not aware of anything that came up in the reports that we reviewed.
Maybe the applicant could address that during part of their presentation.
Yeah, we'll ask him to do that, for sure. Vice Chair Bauma?
Mine's just kind of a question for staff. Like, this is, this site was zoned commercial, or is zoned commercial until we approve it, basically. And the project they're building is 145,673 square feet, and of that, 7,000 of it, 700 is commercial. So how does the, how did the balance come when you do a mixed use? I mean, I always thought it was like greater than, than what it is, but I mean, is there like a balance you give when you evaluate a project to switch from commercial to residential when it's a mixed use?
Commissioner Bauma, commissioners, there is not a set ratio of commercial to residential space. Staff reviewed the project, and we felt the merits of the project warranted the ratio of commercial to residential space, and also understanding that this site, there is a need for this type of housing here, and it will help address some of our housing needs.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I could elaborate a little bit, this, this is one of the bigger issues on our commercial developments, including mixed use. We get a lot of requests for the residential portion of the project and not so much on the commercial. This started, I've been here six years now, and this was the trend even six years ago. With COVID and e-commerce, you know, Prime, we all know Mr. Bezos' salary now, it, it's just huge. It's just a big, big issue with developing any kind of commercial zone property. So what we do is we take it one project at a time, and it's somewhat negotiable, depending on the site's specific nature of the site. Some sites are more viable than others, and so we just take it one step at a time. We try and get some commercial, particularly if it's viable, but again, it's challenging. It's very challenging.
Can I ask one more?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. With that segue from Commissioner, from Planning Director Hunt, the idea of this project with a right-in, right-out, was right-out, right-in, is it going to be very difficult for commercials? So in the future, if this commercial portion of the project that has been set aside, can that applicant come back later and change it to something else of a use that they could actually make money off of? Because possibly if no one rents the commercial space because it's not viable, can they change it without having to go through, or maybe they do have to go through something, but what would that process be?
Chair and commissioners, the first thing we do is we work with the applicant to create what we call form-based commercial. And so it has high ceilings, tall windows, the doors are close to the front of the building, it looks open. It doesn't appear to be a private residential or a private It doesn't appear to be a private residential or a private use. However, we allow somewhat private uses, amenities, a workout room, a yoga room, a storage, a bike shop, real estate, HOA, meeting rooms, et cetera. Well, the idea that should the market ever dictate or allow really commercial rents, then the commercial rents are always higher, and so then it wouldn't take any great effort to change it back to commercial at that time. What we don't want is-- and I think anyone who's drove along North River Road, at Vandergrift, there's the mixed-use complex there, that the commercial sites are all vacant and just either papered over or whitewashed or whatever, and we don't want that, and we don't think that's a good situation.
Thank you for that opinion of that project, because that's kind of what I was kind of getting at. That one's not-- hasn't been viable for over 10 years. It's almost like, what happens, you know? But so, thank you. Sounds like you guys are definitely picking it up on that.
Mr. Chairman, we believe Commissioner Goodkind would like to speak.
Go ahead, Commissioner Goodkind. You had a question?
No, you know, my question was along the same line, so I think it's been addressed. I see sort of a commercial real estate recession going on right now. So, it was just, you know, that was the first thing that I thought of when I started reading about this project, was whether it's viable to have any commercial space. But I think Mr. Hunt addressed that pretty well, and I accept that explanation. Thank you.
Thank you. How about you, Commissioner Crayhill? Any questions for staff?
Well, I do have some questions, but it may be better after the applicant has presented, because I wanted to see what changes were made after the design review committee's comments.
Okay. We can come back to you. And it's a good segue. Turn over this item to the applicant and their consultant to do their presentation. I understand they have one this evening. If you could introduce yourself and give us your name, and then you can go right into your presentation.
Chair Rosales, I'm sorry to interrupt. They actually pre-recorded a presentation, which I can play.
Okay. That's even better. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairperson Rosales and members of the Planning Commission. My name's Dan Niebaum with the Lightfoot Planning Group, with offices in Carlsbad. We're serving as the applicant's representative on this project. And with me via Zoom this evening is Todd Cadwell with Realm, who is the project proponent. And our design team is also with us this evening to assist in answering any questions you may have. We appreciate staff's presentation tonight, and we have a short presentation just to offer a few additional comments regarding the proposed project. This team's really excited to bring forward Mission Flats as a mixed-use infill development in this area of Oceanside. We've appreciated the opportunity to collaborate with staff throughout the project design process to incorporate historic design elements into the project as recommended and suggested by staff. And we've also worked with the Planning Commission Design Review Committee to consider their comments and incorporate several items that we discussed with them into the project. We're located within the historic area, but not in the historic core, and this site at this location has had some unique site challenges due to the shape of the site and proximity to the Highway 76 right-of-way and the grading that's along that right-of-way. But we believe we've successfully responded with a design that really respects the historic character of Mission San Luis Rey and evokes the Mission Revival style. As staff had touched on, the site is surrounded by the Highway 76 corridor on the southeast boundary, the Mission Douglas Commercial Center on the north, and the Mission Plaza Commercial Center to the east. The nearest portion of the Mission San Luis Rey grounds is actually located approximately a quarter mile to the northeast, with the primary Mission buildings located almost a half mile to the northeast. And there is no direct visibility or noted views to or from the Mission San Luis Rey that would be affected by the proposed development of this site. As an infill project, the proposed mixed-use development will complement the surrounding commercial uses, provide a quality residential resource, and support pedestrian connections to adjacent commercial areas. And also with the project's proximity to the Mission San Luis Rey, residents will be able to readily access and experience the significant cultural resource. And the next two slides are simply intended to better show the project's location within the Mission San Luis Rey historic area. This slide and this exhibit is taken from the Historic Area Design Guidelines document, and the site is outlined in yellow at the northeast corner of Douglas and Highway 76. The following photos will help to provide additional context related to the site surroundings. This view, of course, is Douglas Drive along the site frontage, looking to the south. The southerly boundary of the site along Highway 76 is shown here, along with the existing berm and tree landscaping that will help to provide an additional screening buffer along this side of the project. And this view is looking to the north and west along Douglas Drive from the project frontage, showing the commercial centers that are adjacent to the project site. This next slide presents the site plan of the project, showing the configuration of the development on this uniquely shaped site. The project would involve redevelopment of the entire site area as proposed. The mixed-use development features an approximate 3,500-square-foot commercial retail space, integrated with 137 residential apartment units. Parking areas are provided throughout the site with 287 spaces designed to serve the commercial and residential uses and to provide guest parking. Prominent open space amenities are also planned to complement the project, including a large pool and patio area, landscaped courtyards, and dog park. Landscaping is also designed around the site perimeter, throughout parking areas, and adjacent to the building, contributing favorably to the site aesthetic and providing a screening buffer to surrounding areas. The project team has worked diligently with staff to ensure a design solution which respects the historic area aesthetic. To that end, the project integrates significant elements such as these into the overall design. The design presents a robust mixture of building form and mass, with an emphasis on creating upper-story recesses and offset planes. A series of courtyard areas and enhanced public spaces are integrated with the design, serving to organize the building form and provide a pedestrian-scaled aesthetic. The building presents a strong horizontal proportion, which is an important criterion of the Historic Area Design Guidelines. Variations in building form and setbacks and gable roof sections provide a design rhythm and help to break up the massing for the length of the southern elevation along the Highway 76 frontage. The elevations implement a variety of traditional building features and accents that help to define the architectural style. Items such as prominent tower elements, an appropriate color palette, recessed entries and windows, arched entryways and balcony features, decorative window and door surrounds, elements of prominent wall depth, smooth exterior wall finishes and variable wall planes. All these items work together in presenting a traditional design aesthetic. The design of the Mission Flats mixed-use development is intended to complement and respect the historic nature of the Mission, the surrounding area, and adjacent properties. The architectural landscape design respects the local heritage and will be appealing to commercial patrons, residents, and guests. The project will realize new commercial opportunities for this area of Oceanside while also providing additional housing options for the community. Mission Flats implements goals, intents, and objectives of the city's general plan, zoning ordinance, and most importantly, the Mission San Luis Rey Historic Area Development Program and Design Guidelines. Thank you for your time this evening. As I mentioned, our project team is on the line and will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
The project team has worked diligently to address staff's design comments and those of the design review committee. The project did receive unanimous approval of the Oceanside Historic Preservation Advisory Commission, and we would encourage you to concur with staff's recommendation for approval of Mission Flats this evening. Thank you again.
Thank you. And I understand the applicant's team is on Zoom and ready to answer any questions. I think we had one from Commissioner Busk. Do you want to go ahead and ask your question?
Yeah. Could you please let us know what the outcome of your soil analysis was with respect to potential soil contamination around all those buildings?
Yeah, good evening, Commissioner Busk. This is Dan Niebaum, the Lightfoot Planning Group. We had a Phase 1 done as a standard with the initial technical reports for the project that was submitted back to our initial submittal, and that was looked at. That had no, you know, findings of any recognized environmental concerns within it. I can't speak to too much more detail on that, and I know there was nothing to, you know, review and to deeper. DUDAC did do our environmental work on this, and Donna Marshall of DUDAC should be on the line as well, if we'd want her to fill in some more detail on that. But we certainly had Phase 1 done and had no additional concerns raised from that.
Commissioner Crayhill, you had a question, I think, for the applicant, and Dan?
Yeah, Mr. Niebaum, and thank you for the time during the design review committee. I just wanted to kind of touch on some of the issues. The staff report mentions that four specific items that were brought up during the design review committee were addressed and didn't really go into the specifics of the changes, and you'll pardon me for not remembering exactly what was before and after. So, if you wouldn't mind just taking a few minutes to go over some of the changes that were made after that, just to help us understand what was incorporated, please. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Yeah, we appreciate your comments from the DRC. I was taking all the comments from staff through all this process and from the DRC. They were right, posted a report. Shannon.
Hey, Dan, I'm going to interrupt you real quick. We're getting-- we're getting very spotty audio and video from you.
Let me fix that.
Dan, are you still on the line?
Yeah, I'm still here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you just fine. No video, that's-- or audio, you know, video, excuse me. We can-- we can hear you fine. Go ahead, Dan.
The world of Zoom. I was about to say, we took those comments to heart. We added tower elements to the project on the northeast end. Shannon might be able to show those in the chambers, but it'd be hard at the same time. She showed-- we added additional tower elements on the northeast end, or the northwest end, excuse me, and the east end of the project, as was suggested by the DRC. Added additional column banding on the front arcade columns. Added metal accents and detail in the facade walls. Added a heavy wood door at the main entry. Looked at several of those items and were able to work them in. I think the tower elements really, you know, bring the facade views together and bring the project together as a whole, as the DRC had commented on. The north-facing side, even though it faces the back of a shopping center, it really integrates well with the additional towers that were added. Those are the 60-foot-high elements in the project. And the northwest-facing corner is the one that's closest to Douglas, has a little bit more exposure across the parking lot, if you were to stand there and look at it. Those facades and those elevations were really beefed up, if you will, I think, along the lines of what you had asked for there. Shannon's showing that on the screen right now. So, that's the top views, the-- well, both views of the northwest corner. That kind of ties that colonnade around the side and has the tower element further to the-- further to the east on that side. And that was something that you guys felt was missing and added into the project, and it really is a nice element, kind of ties everything together.
Yeah, it does look nice.
Did you guys hear all that okay?
We can hear that fine. Commissioner Crayhill, has that answered your question? Did you add any other comments?
Very much so. I thought I noticed those as I was looking over, and it does, I think, actually add quite a bit. Thank you so much.
Great. Any other comments or questions for-- from the commissioners before we open it up to the public? Okay. I don't see any, so we will open it up to the public for their comment and input. Do we have anything specific, City Planner?
Chair and Commissioners, we had no request to speak via Zoom on this particular item. I think Shannon's already distributed email comments.
Great, thank you. Okay, with that, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to this body for any further comments, questions, or deliberation. And I see a hand raised by Vice Chair Bauma.
Yes, I just wanted to compliment the applicant for listening to our suggestions and then implementing that tower and the elevations you did. I think it looks so much better. I'm glad. I think it's going to be a better project, and I thank you so much for listening and to doing what you did to make it better. So, I appreciate it.
Yeah, and I'll just add my comment. I wasn't part of the review committee, but this looks like it's going to be a real nice addition and fit in real nice with that historical area there. So, kudos to the applicant and those folks that had input to that. Appreciate that. I'm looking for a motion then, at this point, from the commissioners unless there's any other further questions or comments. Vice Chair Bauma?
I'll make a motion.
Vice-- or, you're just Commissioner. Commissioner Morrissey, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to confirm the issuance of a categorical exemption per SEQUA Guidelines, Article 19, Section 15332, and approve Development Plan D1917, Conditional Use Permit, CUP 1922, Historic Permit H192, and Variance V24 by adopting Planning Commission Resolution Number 2020-P28 with findings and conditions of approval attached therein.
And that would include the changes in the resolution that were pointed out by staff?
Yes, thank you.
You bet. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none. Let's vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Commissioner Crayhill, did you weigh in?
Aye, please, yes.
He did also aye. So, there-- it sounds like they're all ayes.
Chairman, we will mark that as six in favor, zero against. The motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, which brings us to our last item, at least public hearing item. Item seven is consideration of general plan amendment, zone amendment, tentative map, and development plan to change the general plan and zoning designations for an 11-acre vacant site and to allow development of 104 dwelling units located at Frazee Road, north of Old Grove Road, within the San Luis Rey neighborhood planning area. Applicant is Sheldon Development. Disclosures all start. I was on the-- I'm getting a little bit of feedback.
I just took--
I was on the Planning Commission when this, or a very similar item, at this location was brought to the commission, I think it was in 2018, September 2018. And I read the staff report and all the attached information. Vice Chair Bauma?
I also served on the Planning Commission and reviewed this project or similar at that time, and I have the staff report, and I also did a site visit again.
Thank you. Commissioner Morrissey?
I reviewed the documents and did a site visit.
Busk?
Same disclosure as Commissioner Bauma. Thank you.
Commissioner Crayhill?
Yeah, similar disclosure. I was on the Planning Commission when we reviewed a similar project. Other than that, no disclosure.
And Commissioner Goodkind?
Site visit and staff materials.
Thank you. With that, we will turn it over to staff for the presentation. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair Rosales, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Sergio Madera. I'm a principal planner with the Plan Division. My pleasure to present to you tonight the project known as Rio Rockwell. This-- what you see tonight represents a culmination of approximately three years' worth of work with the applicant to bring forward the best possible project that balances all the demands on this site and the constraints with-- on this site and the constraints with preserving as much open space as possible. So with that, the staff is asking that the planning commission make a recommendation tonight to the city council on the proposed general plan amendment, zone amendment, tentative map, and development plan. The entitlements before you tonight are a general plan amendment to change the site's zoning from general, or the site's land use from general commercial and single-family detached residential to medium density B, a zone amendment to change the site's zoning from limited commercial and single-family residential to planned development, a tentative map to subdivide the project site into individual parcels as designated in the plan development document, and a development plan for the site approval and to adopt the plan development document, which will serve as the regulatory document, zoning document for the project's. Just to give you some context of the site and its surroundings, it's identified in red on the graphic on the screen for your reference. Surrounding, it's a site located in the San Luis Rey neighborhood planning area, not too far from San Luis Rey Mission, but outside the historic bound, the historic district boundary. It's south of the river and north of 76, just immediately adjacent to Old Grove Road and Frasey Road. In the area you'll see depicted, the commercial developments have occurred since this site was designated, since a portion of this site was designated commercial. And why today, it's location far from 76 and thoroughfare that makes the commercial component viable site for development. The site is composed of two different parcels. Site A is a 1.86 acres and is identified as parcel one, parcel map 12918. This parcel map created the parcels which were eventually developed as the River Ranch project, which is immediately south of this project site. Site B consists of 9.85 acres that is currently owned by the city of Oceanside. The property was a part of a larger acquisition made by the city in 1992 for the Army Corps of Engineers San Luis Rey River Flood Control Project. In 2003, the city declared the property surplus as it wasn't necessary to complete that project. It was additional land that was acquired, that wasn't required, to complete that flood control project. And an RFP was issued for development of housing at the site. There were no takers of that RFP in 2003. The city council, again, provided staff direction in 2008 to develop the site with housing. In 2008, another RFP was issued, and again, there were no takers for that RFP. There were no respondents. And so in 2017, a purchase and sale agreement was entered into with the applicant, Sheldon Development, with the city for the proposed development of residential units at the site. So there's a long history and a little bit of confusion associated with some of the designations associated with the city-owned portion of the site. The graphic on the screen above outlines blue shading, which represents a hardline preserve designation under the city's draft subarea plan. The city-owned portion of the site does have that draft subarea plan designation of hardline preserve. As part of this project, site staff is removing a hardline preserve designation on approximately, a little over six acres of the site, and the hardline preserve designation will remain for the portion, the balance of the site, which is going to be 100-foot biological buffer. We'll get into those details later. Site is identified as having disturbed lands and general vegetation mapping prepared as part of the subarea plan effort and confirmed by the Biological Resource Assessment Report Prepared for the Project. Staff has removed the hardline preserve designation from approximately six acres of Site B and transferred it to a city-owned site located near Rancho del Oro Drive, which will be discussed in a moment. The hardline preserve designation will be maintained on the portion of the site that will be improved with the 100-foot-wide biological buffer and habitat management plan and finding and funding source for its maintenance and perpetuity will be prepared for the buffer area as outlined in mitigation measure 504, the final initial study mitigated negative declaration prepared for the Rio Rockwell project site. Another source of confusion has been, so the city-owned portion, or Site B as we describe it, is part of a larger APN that is comprised of five parcels of record. That parcel, that APN comprises 64 acres, and it's shown here in the black outline that goes across the river. It comes down here. It comes down to the Paula Road right-of-way easement area. This generally 10 acres is what's subject of this application tonight. There is, in 2014, a recorded restrictive covenant associated with mitigation lands associated with the Army Corps of Engineers project site. That's represented with the hatch mark here, with the black and white hatch. This site is not part of that restrictive covenant. It's not part of the restricted lands that's described in that restrictive covenant. So I just wanted to put that out there for clarification. With circulation of the MND of this document, there's been a little bit of confusion as to what restrictions exist on that site, and this is to confirm that there are no restrictions associated with that document. And finally, this is parcel located on Rancho del Oro that's owned by the city. It's outlined in red here. So it's a part of an attempt to preserve the overall acreage within the draft subarea plan. City staff, city planning staff worked with property managers, identified a city site where we can transfer that hardline preserve designation. City property management staff identified this site, which was generally reserved for a future park. The site does contain some sensitive habitat. Biological resource assessment was prepared for the site, and it's found that it contains coastal sage in this general vicinity and does host California gnat catchers at the site. It's also adjacent to other designated hardline preserves within the draft subarea plan. So it seems like the city was getting a little improvement within the hardline preserve designations as this site, as compared to the project site, is, does have sensitive habitat, does have viable gnat catchers, and it is adjacent to other hardline preserves, which is one of the goals of the draft subarea plan. Finally, let's talk about a little bit of surrounding land uses. 11.54 acre site is located, again, on the west side of Frasey, north of Old Grove Road. Surrounded land uses include restored habitat associated with the Army Corps of Engineers San Luis Rey River Flood Control Project. To the south is a residential development known as River Ranch. To the east of the development is a residential development known as River Point, and to the west is Nichols Elementary School. The first in town being requested is a general plan amendment. Again, the site does have two land use categories. The project site does have two land use categories. One is single-family detached residential. That's the city-owned piece. And the other portion, the triangle-shaped piece, is a general commercial designation. In reviewing surrounding land uses, staff find, found that there is a range of medium-density residential A, single-family detached to the west beyond Nichols Elementary, and a little bit of open space to the north, including the San Luis Rey River. There is an intervening parcel, which is part of that restrictive covenant that will maintain the single-family detached land use that's in between the project site and the south bank of the San Luis Rey River. Staff wanted to better understand existing, the existing density pattern and the immediate vicinity of the project site, and we engaged in a density analysis of existing development. What we found, what we used as our basis was the site's 1,500-foot notification radius, and we focused our analysis on the south side of the San Luis Rey River. What staff found that were densities range in the area from about 3.11 acres dwelling units per acres to about 7.9 dwelling units per acre. So 3.11 occurs around here, and the 7.9 occurs over here. Here is the project site, and densities range all over from 6.32, and as depicted in the graphic on the screen. That being said, the density proposed of 9.01 acres is within the range of the MDA R designation, which generally surrounds a site on two different sides. So it's a little bit higher, but still within the range of those land use designation categories. Second entitlement being considered tonight is a zoning amendment to change the site's zonings from single-family detached residential for the city-owned piece and limited commercial for the triangle piece to planned development. This would allow some flexibility, given the site's constraints and buffering requirements, to allow the modification of development standards associated with the underlying zoning that would be associated with the land use category being proposed. One of the stated purposes of Article 17 is to encourage assembly of properties that might otherwise be developed in unrelated increments to the detriment of the surrounding neighborhood. It should also should be noted that under the existing zoning for both sites, a total of 107 units could potentially be developed. The R zoning district allows up to 5.9 dwelling units to eight, per acre, and the limited commercial allows up to 29 dwelling units per acre with approval of a mixed-use development plan. So the 104 units proposed would fall within what existing zoning could allow. Briefly, one of the, as part of the review tonight, plan development plan is proposed under the development plan approval being requested for the project. The proposed Rio Rockwell Plan Development Plan will serve as the regulatory zoning document for the project site. The Rio Rockwell PDP includes site and building design standards as well as development standards, which are unique to the Rio Rockwell project. A copy was provided as an attachment to the staff report for the planning commission's reference. So the site has been designed with two different planning areas. Planning Area 1 consists of approximately eight acres, which is right in here, acres, and includes 52-story, single-family detached homes with lots ranging from 2,054 square feet to 4,011 square feet, with an average of 2,537 square feet. Planning Area 2 consists of three and a half acres and 54 three-story townhomes distributed over 10 separate buildings. Access to the site will be via three driveways, two along Old Grove Road here and here, and one along Frasey Road, which will allow a left in and a right in and a right out, but it would prohibit a left-turning movement out of the project site at that location. One of the unique features of this project is with the tentative map, is that it would result in two final maps. Map A would be for the attached multifamily portion of the development, and a map B would be associated with the single-family detached component of the project. So I'll briefly go through these. There's a lot of different floor plans, and the reason we put this in the, in the presentation is to depict the variety of housing types and floor plans being provided in such a small, compact development. The townhome floor plans, there's four different floor plans proposed, 54 units in total. They range in area from 1179 square feet to 1,700 square feet, and with a range of two to three bedrooms each. There are 10 different buildings proposed in the, in the attached home component of the project. Building A will be a three-unit building and includes three different floor plans, and this occurs in one instance. Building B will be a four-unit building and includes floor plans three and four, and this occurs one time throughout the project. Building C is a five-unit building and includes all the four, all of the attached home floor plans, and this occurs once throughout the project. Building D is a six-unit building and includes floor plans one, two, three, and four, and it occurs once. Building E is a six-unit building and includes one version of each floor plan, and it occurs once through the project. And finally, Building F is a six-unit building that includes plans three and four and includes four times throughout the project site. Project has derived its architectural style from Mission Revival and Spanish Colonial Revival architectural vernacular and nearby San Luis Rey Mission. On the screen above you is the colors and materials for the proposed attached units, and it'll show a variety of colors with different accent colors, tile roofs, and you'll see in these elevations both vertical and horizontal articulation to provide some visual interest in the buildings. Here are some perspective renderings of the different building types being proposed in the multifamily or in the attached unit component of the project. There are three different single-family floor plans proposed, ranging in area from 1,745 to 2,050 square feet. Staff will note that there was a typo in the, in the staff report, which misidentified the floor area of plan number five, but it's been corrected in the slide before you. The bedrooms counts range from three to four bedrooms, and each home has been designed with a two-story, been a two-story elevation with two garage spaces. Each of the proposed single-story or single-family home floor plans have two different designs available to them. This is a little hard to see on the screen, but there's two different roof types for each of the six A, or five A and five B, and we show the proposed color palette and material palette for each individual floor plan type. This is a brand, elevation and roof plan and color materials for home floor plan six. And this is the elevations and roof plan and color materials for floor plan seven. So within the small, compact development, we have a variety of architectural styles being displayed to provide some interest and break up the monotony. And here are some renderings of the proposed single-family homes. So parking was a huge consideration when considering this project and its, its compact design. Through a lot of trial and error with different site plan configurations, we finally came up with a design that provided for 263 total spaces. Each unit, whether it's part of a townhome development or the single-family home, will have two garage spaces. In addition, there will be 55 guest spaces. So the zoning ordinance required, would require 220 spaces for development of this type, and 263 spaces have been provided. And that would be 43 more than what's required by the zoning ordinance. The project has been handsomely landscaped with the, with the lush frontage along both Old Grove and Frasey Roads. One of the unique features of this project is the 100-foot-wide buffer that will be created on the northerly portion of the project site. This serves a couple of purposes. It satisfies the requirements of the subarea plan to provide 100-foot separation between development and existing and sensitive habitat. It also will provide open space at the project site, so it will be, the project did, does have some impacts to existing sensitive habitat on site. There's about 0.76 acres of sand, bar, willow, thicket scattered throughout the site, and so as mitigation for that impact to that 0.76 acres, 2.38 acres of riparian habitat will be planted along the northerly perimeter of the project site, and that riparian habitat will transition to upland habitat that will be, consists of native species adjacent to the proposed development. In addition to serving as a transition from riparian habitat to the development, it will also serve as a fuel modification area where the plant palette that has been selected is of low flammability, and so there won't be a need to go in there and cut back brush on a regular basis. It's been designed, in effect, to reduce the fire risk hazard, and this was designed in conjunction with the fire department. The project does have two handsomely designed active open space areas. One is known as the Central Park and will include shade structure, barbecue area, barbecue, like a counter area and some lounge seating. There's this open grass area. There is also some bench seating nooks provided within this area, and there's a pedestrian network that connects all these places, so anyone from the projects, anyone living within the project can access these through a series of sidewalks that are interconnected. And then there's a village green component of the open space that includes an open playfield that has also some bench seating nooks and a small dog park that, again, has some bench seating. seating nooks. And this will provide some, not only will it provide some open space, active open space for the tenants of the site, it'll also provide a little bit of buffering between the streets and the development and reduce the massing in that sense. So this, this exhibit displays the open space and that are provided with throughout the project in various components. You have a three-point-eight-five-acre, hundred-foot buffer on the northerly perimeter of the project site and active open space here at the southerly portion of the project site and various components of private open space that's scattered throughout the project site in the form of back, private backyards and landscaping areas and common landscaping areas. All combined, those, those private open spaces or those, all those various forms of open spaces equals six-point-seven-five acres and that's over half of the project site that's being preserved in open space of one form or another. So that was one of the balances that needed to be struck with this project and the applicant has done a commendable job in coming up with a design that preserves as much open space as possible while still providing a viable project. One of the compensating benefits of this project is that it will be constructing a roundabout at the project intersection of Old Grove Road and Frizzi Road. This was a requirement of the Traffic Engineering Division in order, doesn't really address a level of service issue because the project, the existing level of service is A at this project intersection and the project level of service after the project will be a level of service A. But in a, in an attempt to improve flow of traffic, especially during the peak hours when parents are dropping their children off and picking their children off up at school, the traffic circle was required and the applicant is going to construct a traffic circle as depicted in this conceptual design. It will consist of raised medians. I'm not sure the correct term, but there'll be a flashing beacons and crosswalk here to alert people that this is a crosswalk and there will be raised, I think I mentioned already, but there'll be raised medians constructed in all four components of this intersection. And finally, which staff feels is the biggest public benefit that this project is providing is compliance with the Surplus Land Act. Having been declared surplus land in two thousand and three, the project is subject to compliance with the Surplus Land Act, which requires that fifteen percent of the project units be reserved for lower-income households. The fifteen percent would be applicable to the area shaded in red, which is the portion that is the surplus land that's currently owned by the city. That reservation requirement results in eleven units being reserved for the lower-income category. And so they will be concentrated in the multifamily component of the project site. So in addition to reserving eleven units for lower-income families, the applicant will also be required to pay an in-loof fee for the single-family component of the project site. So really, we're kind of getting a win-win here. We're getting produced affordable housing and we're also getting contributions to the city's inclusionary housing fund. And finally, that staff does recommend that the planning commission adopt a resolution recommending that the city council adopt a mitigating negative declaration, approve the general plan amendment, approve the zone amendment, the tentative map and a development plan for the hundred, the proposed hundred and four-unit residential development. Staff will note that there was an error in the naming of the resolution. So rather than being Resolution twenty-twenty P thirty, it would actually be twenty-twenty P thirty-two. That concludes my staff report and I'm available for any questions that the commission may have. The applicant has prepared a presentation and is ready to give it when the commission is ready.
Great. Thank you, Sergio, for that very thorough presentation. Any questions for staff at this point? Commissioner Crayhill?
Thanks. Just one of the issues brought up in this Nygaard's letter about VMT analysis, was a VMT analysis required and if not, why not?
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner Crayhill, for your question. A VMT analysis was not required for this project as it was circulated for public review prior to the city's implementation of a VMT analysis requirement. So we did not require this project. It also was submitted prior to the city adopting those VMT analysis, those VMT guidelines. Under CEQA, Section fifteen zero zero seven C, as long as a document goes out for public review before a change is made to the, any guidelines, there's no need to update the document to require that.
Thank you, Mr. Madera. And just one more, Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
And this one, I know the answer to it, but just because we're in this process and I think it's a helpful thing to bring into this conversation. This is near the seventy-six freeway, but is this specific area identified as part of the proposed smart, sustainable corridor plan that's included in the ongoing general plan update process?
Commissioner Crayhill, I don't believe this site would be, would fall into the smart corridor. Those, those, that corridor is focused on the city's east-west major arterials, including Vista Way, Oceanside Boulevard, Mission Avenue. I'm not sure if seventy-six falls in there. I believe the initial mapping does not, would not include this site.
Thank you, Mr. Madera.
Commissioner, good, good, good kind, sorry. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Busk?
Yeah, I, I've been doing this for a little while. I'm still learning vocabulary. What is the city, what is the Hardline Preserve? What are the requirements and the conditions? Who establishes it? How long does it last?
Sure. It's a fair question and not an easy one to answer. So the Hardline Preserve is a preservation tool that's included in the city's draft subarea plan. The way the subarea plan was drafted, it chose a number of, of locations in town that were, would maybe be a good idea to preserve for preservation, for sensitive habitat. They weren't, not all of them, not all of the selections were based on biological information. As an example, this site, it was designated a Hardline Preserve, even though the site has disturbed land, it consists of predominantly disturbed land. It also extends out, the polygon extends out to the center line of Old Grove Road. So it was more of a representational tool to show how preserves can be, I have lost the words here. Preserves can be assembled and make the plan work as it's drafted, but that plan's never been adopted by the city council. And so it's drafted, the staff uses it, we implement it to the extent that we can. So in this case, we're not losing any Hardline Preserve acreage with the redesignation of the site on Rancho del Oro.
The, but we're also establishing some Hardline Preserve as part of this plan?
Yes, we would be establishing about three and a half acres of Hardline Preserve as part of this plan that will be under Habitat Management Plan and will be maintained accordingly.
So that becomes a permanent hardline. It can't be
That's correct.
Change sometime in the future.
It will not because the final map will designate this site, that portion, the final maps, because there's multiple maps, will designate those portions of the site as open space in perpetuity, subject to a restrictive covenant and Habitat Management Plan.
Okay. And then the other issue I have about that is we say we're going to figure out some kind of mechanism, funding mechanism in the future to preserve that land for the upkeep. That upkeep is not inexpensive. We're doing a project for the Audubon Society on thirty-one acres up by the marine base to refurbish or redo the land. It's costing three million dollars to maintain the land in perpetuity. We had to put aside two million dollars in order to do the maintenance of that. That is not a small amount of money. So where do we expect to find money to maintain this?
So the developer would have to create a Habitat Management Plan and, and fund a non-wasting endowment to provide for the maintenance of that. The amount of that non-wasting endowment would be determined when the Habitat Management Plan is prepared and analyzed by city staff. And then that would have to be deposited to the interest of that non-wasting endowment and fund the ongoing maintenance of that three-point-eight-five-acre biological buffer.
So that funding will be part of the total package that we're approving this evening?
Yes, it's part of a mitigation measure. A mitigation measure bio four has been amended to include that language.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Vice Chair Boma?
I have a question. I saw, this is, to me, it's kind of something unique and I like the way it looks on the plan. On the detached, single-family houses, you've combined the setbacks on one side of the house. So the prop, the, the house wall then on one side would just be the other person's yard. But my question is, how does like, I think it's a great idea, but how does a homeowner that buys the house want to do something with his, say his screen fell out or his, he has to do something different on his, on the side of the house that's now inside of someone's, you know, yard? Is there something that's going to be written into these people when they buy these houses that you have to be a friendly neighbor?
Commissioner Boma, that's a fair question. There will have to be some provisions within the private CCNRs that address this topic.
Yeah.
Good question. Where were we? Oh, applicant. You said had a presentation?
They do and they should be on the Zoom call, Scott.
Yeah, I believe the applicant's Steve Sheldon and there he is. Here he is there. Steve, can you hear us?
I can, thank you. Can you see me? There we go.
Steve, go ahead and introduce yourself to the whole commission if you wouldn't mind.
My name is Steve Sheldon and with the Sheldon Development and I am the applicant for the project and it's my, my pleasure to be here with you this evening. Thank you.
Well, welcome and go ahead if you have a presentation.
I do, I wanted, before I start my presentation or before you start the clock, I'd like to thank Jeff Hunt and Sergio Madera for working with us and providing us a lot of guidance and positive suggestions for us to take a look at. I think we've together come up with a great project that addresses many, many concerns and I believe it'll be very, a great place for, for families and for, and for everyone to live at when, when it's constructed. Hundred and four very happy homeowners. So I want to thank the city staff and the fire and public works and engineering, everyone that really played a part in giving us good input and suggestions. So thank you very much as a, a professional staff. With us today is our, our architect, Eric Van Wijkel, and our biologist, Peter Carlson. And they're available for questions as long, of course, as I will be as well. So tell me, how do I start the presentation? Because I have, it's loaded up by the city.
So I think I'll have to advance the slides for you, Steve. So it's on the, the main slide now. Scott, if you could put the computer back up on the
Looks, looks like we'll do that for you, Steve.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Can you see that okay? Because we, we can see the first slide.
Yes, now I can't. I'm not able to see it on my screen. Let me, right here. There we go. Okay, thank you. Well, our community is named Rio Rockwell and we, we a tight-knit community with a lot of open space and parks for the residents to enjoy. I'll go, I'll go to the next slide. I wanted to give a historic perspective of the, of the area. So this is what the property looks like that circled in, at nineteen sixty-seven, you have the Mobile Home Park here to our left as we're looking at it. And on the bottom, I think left is the, is the, is the mission. If we go to the next slide, that shows it a little closer up and you can see the, the mission in, or the mission and the Mobile Home Park, Park Community in the circle. We go to the next slide. Then we jump up to nineteen eighty-nine and you'll see some development starting there in one of the communities. And you also see the, the riparian open space area by the river that's fairly used for trails and different things before there was the restoration and the sediment removal from the San Luis Rey River. Go to the next slide, two thousand and two, and we now see more development, more homes being built and this is the community that's, that's across from us. So I just wanted to give a, a perspective of kind of how development came to the area, the timing of it and, and it was all open space at one time, of course. So we'll go to our, our next slide, please. This is the site that you've all seen. It's fairly disturbed. It has a little bit of growth on it. Let's go to the next slide. All right. So this is our, our site plan, of course, you've all seen. And I'm going to focus first on just the, 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 the front part here. I guess you can't see my, can you see my cursor moving? Is I able to occur with this?
No, it doesn't look like it.
If we can go, go to the next slide, please. Great. So this is the, the entrance near the roundabout and you'll, you can see the elevation and the, the lack of massing from the three-story product. It's set back just because of the nature of the triangular-shaped property and that provides a good buffer and it provides a good open space there in front. We have the wrought iron surrounding with no access in or out at that point, except for fire. And that would provide security for any children that are playing there in that grassy, open area. And again, of course, the landscaping behind that to screen it, if we go to the next slide, please. So here's a close, you've seen this already, you have the Village Green and the, and all the different activities. I kind of, with having kids, look at it as like a great kickball because you've got a home plate and a first and a second, third, and I could see kids doing that. And I think my, my, my kids would have certainly done that and probably hit a few windows in the back in the houses. So let's go to the, the next slide. And here's the, the dog park and I think the picture on the top left kind of looks like the most of what we might have there with, with the DG. And it's, it'd be a great place for those that have dogs that live in the, in any, any part of the community. And I know that those that have them, they have to get home, but just, it's just a great place to meet your neighbors and I've been a part of a community that had dog park and I think it was wonderful. And my dog enjoyed it quite a bit. He loved going to the park. Next slide, please. Okay, so now we're going to take a look, this is the, on Old Grove as you're, I guess you're going eastbound sort of. And this is the entrance to the, to the, the, the main entrance to the community on your left-hand side. Next slide, please. So this, this shows the Central Park and this is just an example of what would be the gathering area with the awning and the furniture and the outdoor fireplace and just all the gathering areas, barbecue. And I think this is a little smaller actually than what we'd have. I think it, it, it's about eighty-five-hundred, nine-thousand square feet of, of, of area, which is quite good size for one of our gathering areas. You can just see from the exhibit on, on your right that there's a lot of grass there plus the, all the shade, the shade structure and other chairs and such. Go to the next slide, please. So now we're going to take a look at the entrance there, but on, once you're inside the project, I want to, as, as if we're walking through there, I'm going to show you some homes there. If we go to the next slide, please. So this is looking also maybe east and the exit is just to your right that I showed you and this is what some of the single-family detached homes, homes would look like. We can go to the next slide, please. Now we're just went a little closer just to show you the architecture and I think, I think they're going to look, going to look wonderful. Next slide, please. So now we're going to look here on the west end of the project, just to get, get a feel of that, of the homes over there. And we can go to that slide. And this is looking east of, of, of the drive aisle and you can see homes, homes again on your left and parking and there's more guest parking in the back. The Old Grove is on your right and the school is about maybe a hundred or about two-hundred feet just behind us is where this, is where the Nichols Elementary is. Go to the next slide, please. So this just gives a feeling, you've seen the architecture. We wanted to sort of show the massing and the setbacks between the homes and sort of what that feels like from a, from a bird's eye view. Go to the next slide, please. These are the attached homes that you've seen. I think they look wonderful. There's the second-story balconies are kind of like outdoor California room or they're California rooms. They have a, they're a little larger and they are really popular with the homeowners. And most of the homes have a, a secure patio, so to speak, so they can receive packages. That's very important to, to home buyers with everyone receiving packages nowadays. Can I have the, the next slide, please? So here's again, a view of the, the entrance and a view and that, that's the completion of our presentation. We might We might have a few more that, that we need to, based upon your questions, but I'm available here for questions.
Great, thank you, Mr. Sheldon. Any questions for the applicant from the commissioners? Commissioners on Zoom, any questions? Hearing none. We'll go to the public then and ask for any input. Do we have anybody on Zoom, or? I don't recall getting any emails specifically, but anybody on Zoom ready to speak?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, we have five speakers on this item.
Okay.
The first speaker is Joan Herskowitz.
Go ahead, Ms. Herskowitz.
Good evening, Commissioners. In 2003, Oceanside and other North County cities agreed to participate in a multiple habitat conservation plan, and in 2010, the city developed a draft subarea plan specific to Oceanside. Since then, many in the community were given to understand that the draft plan would still guide decisions on new development. In fact, planning staff recently indicated that, quote, "We are implementing provisions of the draft plan." If so, then how did we get to where we are with this project? The project impacts 9.6 acres that fall within the plan's hardline preserve for conservation of the leasebells of Irio, a federal and state endangered species. The preserve design is based on many years of study by U.S. Geological Survey biologists. They determined that there is a high potential that this species and the endangered southwestern willow flycatcher will utilize habitat in the preserve, which runs along the San Luis Rey River, one of the county's most biologically rich river corridors. In exchange for impacts on the existing hardline preserve, the developer is proposing to transfer hardline preserve designation to Rancho de Oro site, which supports coastal sage scrub but is predominantly non-native. It's a small, steeply sloped, city-owned parcel surrounded by development. There is no equivalency between significance of native habitat at the two sites. With regard to the biological buffer, the buffer is reduced in value by its overlap with the fire modification zone, which is not permitted in the draft subarea plan. In addition, it's not clear about the provisions for monitoring and managing the buffer. To sum up, development projects in hardline preserves will cause incremental losses to significant wildlife habitat. We hope the city will ultimately approve the MHP subarea plan, but in the meantime, critical habitat must be protected by the draft plan, or this habitat will become unsustainable for endangered wildlife. It's a bad precedent. We believe the project's biological impacts are significant and unmitigated. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Mr. Chairman, your next speaker is Kathleen Volbuena.
Welcome.
Kathleen, this is Scott. I sent you a request to unmute. If you can hit unmute and start speaking, that'd be great. Thank you. We can go to the next one.
Let's go, yeah, let's go to the next speaker. We'll can come back to this one. Go ahead. Next speaker?
Kyla. The next speaker is Kyla Wabazuski.
Hello, yes, thank you. I just have a quick statement. My name is Kyla Wabazuski, and I currently reside at 610 Rockledge Street in Oceanside. My boyfriend and I bought our first home together about a year ago off Rockledge Street. He grew up here and I grew up in the surrounding area. We plan to raise our family here in the future, and we hope to renovate our current home and move into a new construction home within the next couple of years. I support the building of homes off Frazay Road because, by Sheldon Development, because I believe our community needs to expand housing. Oceanside has an amazing set of schools for new families but lacks affordable housing near them. This development would also come back, or welcome back, many families that grew up here. As the presentation showed, the land has been vacant likely forever, and I believe this development will enhance the beauty of our neighborhood truly. The developer has done a wonderful job architecturally and with landscaping to make sure that this addition will fit into the character of Oceanside. The possibility of these town, townhomes is wonderful, and I truly hope that the city realizes the benefits of this development for our community. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next public speaker? Your next speaker is Anthony Schatzleen.
I have a speaker here of Anthony Fan. Is this the same speaker as an Anthony Schatzkowitz?
Schatzleen.
Schatz, Schatzleen, sorry about that. I don't see them unmuting, so we'll move on to the next.
Okay.
So, the next speaker is Diane Nygaard.
Good evening, Diane.
Diane, we cannot hear you. Perhaps you need to unmute your own mic.
Can we try Kathleen, or was it Kathleen?
So, we'll, we'll go back to Kathleen Volbuena.
Hi, can you please introduce yourself?
Hi, my name is Kathleen Volbuena. I'm a realtor, and I live in, I lived in Oceanside for about 17 years, and as a realtor, I work with young families all the time who wants to buy a new home in Oceanside. Most of them rent and desire to purchase a home so they can plant roots in the city. By the way, I'm reading this from the letter that I sent to Mr. Madera, the city planner.
Okay, continue.
Okay. They have young children or desire to start a family and have one or two children. The, since Nicholas Elementary is an adjacent, the Rio Rockwell community will attract families with young children. The Rio Rockwell is prized to allow young working place to buy affordably priced new homes. Additionally, the 11 affordable homes will be of a great interest to my former military clients who are on a fixed income. In my experience, most of the buyers in Rio Rockwell will come from Oceanside and North San Diego County. A good percentage of the buyers will be empty nesters who want to use their existing home equity to step down to a brand-new, less expensive home so they, they can travel and enjoy their active retirement years. They love Oceanside and want to stay.
Thank you for your input. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Are we ready for?
So, we'll go back to the, the speaker name that I have is Steve Sheldon, I'm sorry. Anthony.
Anthony.
Schatzleen.
Anthony, are you there? Can you hear us?
And again, we don't have an Anthony Schatz, Schatzleen on Scott's list. We do have an Anthony, what's his name?
Fan.
Fan? Anthony Fan, do you wish to speak to the planning commission? So, we could, we want to try Diane again?
Diane Nygaard one more time?
So, Diane Nygaard, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. We can hear you. Go ahead, Diane.
Yay! I just want to say, it's very disappointing when our city doesn't really hold itself to the same standards that we expect of developers. And it was quite a surprise to learn recently that for years, for almost 20 years, this land has been identified as hardline preserve in our draft subarea plan, used as a guidance document for developers, but in fact, the city has offered it for sale three times. It really can't be both, and clearly, that draft plan should have been modified some time ago if that was no longer the intent. It is not a landscape-level plan. It is a detailed plan that was developed parcel by parcel, so taking out one parcel should have really been addressed some time ago. It's very, makes us concerned about how many other surprises like that might be hidden in this plan that we're not aware of till development comes forward. We need your help to get this subarea plan adopted and to make sure that our city complies with it, the same as we asked developers to do. I got three other specific project issues. The fire buffer, while staff talked about, well, we very carefully selected the plants. Plants grow, plants die, plants change over time. You can't really have a fire buffer be the same as the biological buffer. Under the guidelines in the subarea plan, they're clearly two separate things with two separate guidelines if they can't coexist. Please read Bio, Bio 04. There was earlier discussion about the, the endowment, non-wasting endowment. A developer would be required to fund that endowment. Read the actual language in Bio 4. It makes a distinction between the 100-foot buffer and the 2.2-acre mitigation land that will be restored and endowed. It's the rest of that 100-foot buffer that's really of concern, and the way the language is written, it could be the developer, the city, and it only says it's going to identify a funding source. It doesn't say that funding will be provided and that will be managed. And I respectfully disagree with staff about their determination that VMT analysis is not required. The law that requires VMP was passed in 2013. It was effective July 1, 2020. It specifically allowed developers three ways to comply. If there was a local ordinance, they could do that. They could come up with their own method of, of assuring compliance, or they could fall back onto the State Office of Planning and Research. But clearly, it was effective July 1, 2020, and this project was not asked to comply. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have our last speaker, or?
The last speaker who, who we've not been able to get ahold of is Anthony Schatzleen.
Okay, we've made a couple of attempts. Anthony, are you there? Or, I think this will be our last attempt to try to reach you. Okay, hearing nothing from Anthony, that concludes our public, the list of public speakers?
Yes.
Thank you. So, we'll close the public here and bring it back for comments and questions. I, I had a couple of things that stuck out to me. So, one of the speakers asked about, and I probably don't have it exactly right, but the, the difference between the environmental significance of the site that's being proposed to development and then the hard, what do we call it, hardline preservation area off Rancho de Oro, that the two aren't compatible, that you have different environmental factors in play there. And again, I'm kind of paraphrasing what she said. When, when we do that sort of, I'll call it a transfer, or between the two, is that, is that a factor, or do we look for compatibility, or do we just say, this is a good site, this is a good replacement? I understand all of this is still kind of in draft form, which is another question I had, but talk us through that, if you wouldn't mind.
Sure. Chair Rosales, members of the planning commissioner, commission. I believe, I'm not familiar with another instance in which a hardline preserve designation needed to be transferred because of a proposed development. This may be the first for the city of Oceanside. When we entered into that, or we engaged in that exercise, we were looking for two things. One is that the parcel be city-owned, owned by the city, that we can, the city controlled it and had the ability to encumber it with a restrictive covenant or a deed restriction to ensure that it would be available for hardline preserve designation in perpetuity. On the second topic that we looked at was, what does the site consist of? Is there any development potential there? This site clearly has very limited development potential because of its existing topography, its location adjacent to existing residences, a unique site, the unique nature that it's, it's located adjacent to other preserves. So, the staff made a decision that this site, being that it had existing habitat and it hosted sensitive species, was a biologically superior site as compared to the project part of the site which exists, which consists of disturbed, very low-value habitat. Could it be restored? Yes, there is a potential to restore that area to sensitive habitat, similar to what was done by the Army Corps of Engineers. But that wasn't necessary to complete that project, and the city sees the, the land as an asset that should be developed for housing. That's the direction we received counsel, and that's the, the direction we took when going, entered into that exercise.
Okay, well, that's a fair response. And we talked, or one of the speakers, or several of the speakers, talked about the subarea plan not having been adopted yet. I think there was some reference to the fact that it's been out there for 20 years or so, maybe? Maybe give us a sense of, you know, where that is in terms of getting adopted, so that we have something that is in a draft form.
Chair and planning commissioners, it's accurate to say we've had a draft plan, I think literally for decades. To the best of my knowledge, it has never gone before the city council, even for preliminary review, and that's to the best of my knowledge. We have a de facto agreement with the wildlife agencies to implement the plan as best we can. The plan speaks to aspirational goals, going beyond just conserving existing identified lands, but it goes beyond that to where the city would actually go out and acquire more land, enhance that land, and then maintain that land. There's also some somewhat restrictive policies that are, I believe, more palatable if you have some of the carrots of the plan, such as having an impact fee, where that fee could then go out and acquire mitigation land to serve as mitigation for impacts. Without the carrots of the plan, it's difficult to implement the plan as it's written. So, what has happened over time is essentially, we have a case-by-case negotiation with the wildlife agencies, project by project. And so, we are in the process of, with our general plan update, we are going to change our existing environmental management element into a conservation element. And we intend to, according to our RFP, and the council's been apprised of this, and the wildlife agencies have been apprised of this, Joan and Diane have been apprised of this, we intend to take the subarea plan and reformat it as a policy document and include those policies in our conservation element. This is very similar to what Vista did, and that removes that financial obligation and the difficulties of that plan, the difficult parts of it. We're not intending to get the plan, we're not intending to no longer do habitat preservation. We're trying to do it in a, in a way that's palatable. To the best of our knowledge, there's no other city except for Carlsbad in the North County that has adopted a subarea plan, just because it's so arduous without, without outside regional funding. North County, the northern plan for the county, I believe, is going to their board. I'm not sure if it's for adoption, but maybe more of a preliminary review. So, they may have something in the future, but I'm not sure if that'll come to adoption. So, it's a, it's a difficult situation. So it's a, it's a difficult situation administering a plan, which is a draft that has never been adopted by council. And again, we do it on a case-by-case basis. Sergio can speak to the wildlife agency's comments on this particular project. And again, the conservation element will contain policies speaking to these goals and actions that the city should pursue in terms of habitat preservation. That conservation element will come before this body in the coming future. Sorry for the long-winded answer, it's somewhat complex.
No, I can appreciate it's complex. It sounds like staff's been sort of taking what's in draft form and using that as a guide, understanding it's not, it's not a commitment, but working through that process and trying to, what's the word I'm looking for, honor the intent of the, the plan, the subarea plan, all these, all these years. But it sounds like now there's a firm commitment to include it in as a policy-level piece within the general plan amendment and improvement. Okay?
And I will add one more thing. We do have two types of preserves, a hardline preserve, which is the blue on the map, as has been mentioned. There's actually two types of hardline preserves. Some of them have had a biological survey and a conservation easement recorded on them. And then there's some that are more aspirational, and that's what this site is. There is no biological survey that has led to a conservation easement recorded. And it's very, actually very similar to a softline preserve, except that it's a hardline. It's intended for the site to be preserved. And I think, as you said, Chair, I think this is in line with the spirit of the plan, given, given the ambiguities and the difficulty in administering such a plan.
Great, I'll throw it over to any other commissioners. Commissioner Busk?
Yeah, Sergio, just to follow up on that. So did any of the wildlife agencies comment on the swap between these two hardline areas?
Commissioner Busk, going off memory here, and I do have the letter in front of me, but it's 11 pages long, that we received their comments from on the draft mitigated negative declaration. The comment regarding the exchange of hardline preserve designation from one site to another wasn't officially brought up in the letter. Staff did have preliminary discussions with the wildlife agencies and the applicants back in 2017, I believe, where we floated the concept that we would, we would redesignate another site, a hardline preserve, while removing a portion of this site from the hardline preserve. They agreed to the concept in general, pending the biological function of the proposed site to be preserved. It was staff's opinion, based on the biological assessment report received for the Rancho del Oro site, that it functions at a higher level biologically than project site.
And we can assume that they're equivalent sizes?
Yes, they're about 6.31 acres each.
Thank you.
Commissioner Crayhill, Commissioner Goodkind, any comments, questions for staff?
Not at this time, thank you.
I don't have a question, but I have comments if you're ready for them.
Yeah, absolutely.
The disembodied voice, I can't imagine what was in the chamber there. But, so I just, you know, obviously, we've already heard somewhat of a similar project as this previously, so my opinions have not changed dramatically. We're being asked to make a general plan amendment and a zoning amendment, and that's right in the middle of a major general plan update, something that hasn't occurred in decades since, I mean, essentially, I was born. So to be changing the general plan and the zoning ordinance is in the middle of a general plan update, even when we were talking about the subarea plan being incorporated as part of the conservation element of that general plan update, just seems like we're not being smart about planning. We, we need to be careful in considering what we're signaling about how we want Oceanside to grow. Now, don't get me wrong, I like what's being proposed generally with the map A, you know, the townhomes incorporates density, it's nearer to the major transportation arteries than the long line of outdated single-family homes. But, you know, both are just right next to a major riparian habitat. I think we've heard, you know, the environmental mitigation just really isn't acceptable, you know, to trade this contiguous habitat, contiguous, right, with the river there. You know, that's major habitat corridor for some isolated habitat far away in the city. And, you know, I just, I think it's also just generally, as I already asked in my very first question, far away from our pending plan for smart and sustainable corridors. The 76th Mission kind of corridor is one of the areas, but this is explicitly not part of it. You can look at the map, it's, it's not necessarily close, but it's not ridiculously far, but the point is that it's not part of those corridors. So what's the point of having these smart, sustainable corridors if we're just going to ignore them? So I just don't think we should be encouraging yet more residential sprawl on top of precious riparian habitat near the San Luis Rey River that's completely outside our smart and sustainable growth corridor. So we're either going to grow smart, or we're going to continue to build out into our open space habitat areas. And so I just, that can't support this change in our general plan and our zoning ordinance at this time.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? I think we've run through the two presentations, public input and some input from commissioners. So I think that leaves us at the point where we are going to, I'm going to ask somebody to present a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I think protocol would suggest you ask the applicant if he has any rebuttal.
Thank you for that reminder. I will do that. Mr. Sheldon, you heard of some of our comments and staff's response to a couple of questions as well. Would you like to respond to anything that you heard before we do take a vote?
Thank you for the opportunity, but I would, I do not, I would not like to respond.
Okay. Thank you. Again, that brings us back to looking for a motion from anybody who would like to offer one. Vice Chair Obama?
Yes, I guess a little bit before, before we go into the motion thing, I just would like to just reiterate maybe some of my feelings on this project. The site that we've all been out to see is very disturbed, as we've all seen. It's not, there's nothing really on it. So that all of the planting and all of the work that the developer's going to do is going to be restoring habitat, making it better, because now it's just pretty much dirt. And then the idea of actually taking six and a half acres, whatever it is, and then going into another area and actually going further with that, and actually to a site that sounds like it has even pretty good habitat that's going to be adjacent to, is another way of just saying that we're not perfect, but it's a really good olive branch out to making it right. So I think that the habitat part of this, I feel comfortable moving along and supporting this project. I also kind of like other elements of the project. I'm kind of a roundabout person, and so I really thought the roundabout was kind of nice, that they actually did that. I like the idea that they're doing affordable housing, and I thought that was really good. And also, some of these units even not even being in the affordable housing where it's dictated, it's kind of like this, the nature of what they're building is going to be nice to have as affordable or like market rate, or even maybe lower for people to come into this neighborhood. I also like the idea that I read in the staff report that they're going to be dedicating a circuit in every one of the units for electric vehicles. That's kind of a cool progressive way. It's not going to actually put the plug in, but they're going to have it so it's wired that if someone comes along in the future, which is kind of going that way with Gavin Newsom saying in what, 2035, everybody's going to have electric cars. So that's kind of a nice, another way of kind of putting into this project. So with all of those elements and more, even that idea of the setback combination, which I thought that was kind of unique, I'm supporting this project. And I would make a motion, but I would respectfully wait for any other comments from fellow commissioners.
I love the idea that there's a school right there. I can see that this is affordable housing, and the people that work here, or fire department, or police, the people, teachers, they could, they could raise families, and the school's right there. And right now, it's just an eyesore. So I am, I'm for people, and I'm for kids, and so I think it's a great project.
Yeah, and I'll just offer support, Vice Chair, for the comments. It's not maybe perfect in terms of everything we want, but I think between staff's efforts and the developer, and lots of input from others, it's probably about as good as we can to address a number of issues. Preserve in another area, the six acres, developing some additional housing and so forth. So with that, I think I could support it moving forward. But I'll, I'll even offer to let you finish your, any input from the commissioners on Zoom before we?
I have nothing, nothing to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead if you want to make a motion.
All right, then I will make a motion to the Adopt Planning Commission Resolution Number 2020 P30, recommending to city council that they adopt adoption of a mitigated negative declaration and approval of a general plan amendment, GPA 1800001, zone amendment, ZA 1800005, tentative map, T180007, and development plan, D180014, for the development of 104-unit residential development.
I'm sorry, did you say Resolution 2020 P30 or 32 in your motion? It should, I think, be correct to 32.
Oh, so there's a, there's a change?
Yeah.
So the very first one, instead of P30, it's 32?
Right.
Okay, sorry, I just read the paper.
Yeah.
That was a typo that we described.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
Second to 32.
Remembered all that, that's why you're the chair.
So yeah, with that correction, we have the motion. We have a second from Commissioner Morrissey. Any additional comments before we vote? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion and second say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
That was Commissioner Crayhill?
That's right.
Okay. Could we get a confirmation of Commissioner Goodkind's vote?
It was aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For the record, it's a five in favor, one against Commissioner Busk.
No, that would be Commissioner Crayhill.
Commissioner Crayhill, thank you.
Thank you.
And the motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes our items, public hearing items. So we will go to the next item on the agenda, appeal of city planners' determination. I don't see anything listed there, so we'll go to discussion items. It looks like we have one item under discussion items, and that is discussion approval of the 2021 meeting calendar. Do we, did we receive an email with a calendar?
I didn't see anything.
Just as an explanation, not an excuse, we should cover for each other. Our clerical staff was out this week, so it sounds like we had a glitch. We'll get that in your next agenda, and we can review it thoroughly.
Sure, we'll carry that over to the next meeting. Thank you. Brings us to city planner, commissioner reports. I'll start with my report. I really have nothing other than I'm glad to be back here after a couple of months. I missed you folks. I will comment on the Zoom thing. I think it went fairly smooth. Couple of glitches, but by and large, I think it went fairly well. So thank you for setting that up. It's, it's a good option to what we had prior to this, and I appreciate that. I also like having the mask off, or at least for this. So that's all I have. Vice Chair Obama?
I really have nothing to report, other than I can't wait for this election to be over. With all the swords flying, with everybody's, you know, comments, it's kind of going to be nice to kind of go back to being, you know, moving forward.
Yeah.
So true. One more, Commissioner Crayhill?
Yeah, mostly just combined those two. That second, the Zoom, actually went well from the perspective of disembodied commissioner. I think this was effective. And then, yeah, just like Commissioner Obama, please vote, 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 vote.
How, how was the Zoom on your end? Pretty, pretty good?
Yeah, no, it's, it's just fine, you know, other than the fact that we can't, you know, kind of click the buttons and everything like that. I mean, obviously, handling it similarly the way you are, you know, calling on us and everything works out really well. I had no complaints.
Great. Commissioner Busk?
I'd just like to reiterate what you said, Chair, that the Zoom is much better, I think, than what we were doing before. So thanks for setting that up.
Yeah, definitely. Commissioner Goodkind, how was it on your end? Okay?
Great, I just have a question for you guys, though. Can you see us during the Zoom on video?
Yes.
Yeah, you're either a very small picture, or in this case, right now, we're seeing your entire background there, which looks like streets or something.
That's a map of Oceanside. I'm just curious what it, what it was functioning like on your end. But yeah, it's great on this side.
I think staff is keeping the two of you on video the entire time, where the other folks in the meeting are, we don't, we just see their name, we don't see an image of them, which I think makes sense. The two should, we should be able to see the two of you. Commissioner Morrissey?
No report.
No report. And Commissioner Custer is absent. Okay, so city planner, your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The planning commission, we should have had it on your agenda as well. The November 9 meeting, we have no items at this point, so we're intending to cancel that. November 12, which is a Thursday, at 3:00 PM, is the Brother Benno Standing Committee meeting, and it'll be a similar format to today, and it'll be Zoom with KOCT. On November 23, we have the Lemon Street Apartments, 11, pardon me, 1011 South Tremont, I believe that's a condo project, and then a balcony at 1725 South Pacific. It's on the shoreline, so that's why balcony triggers it. I'm also going to try and bring forward a memo on updating the RENA process, our numbers, and what's gone through with that. And then I'm working on a legislative memo regarding the 2020 session, and hopefully we can get that to you as well on the 23rd. For council, going backwards, the Left Coast Conditional Use Permit was approved on October 7. And then November 4 is the appeal by Matt Lack of the denial by this body. And then November 18, we have Rio Rockwell, the item that you saw tonight. The general plan update, we recently concluded a number of interview panels, and on each of the general plan elements, there's a couple still to continue. But from those panels and those interviews, they will gather information and identify goals and policies and action items that will then inform each of the elements. Eventually, we'll go out to the public with those, and we're moving along on the general plan update, I guess. Finally, on the Zoom, I thought it went fairly well. Of course, you know, we'd like to do better. I think we will do better just as we get used to it and figure things out a little bit. So hopefully, we'll move it along, make it even smoother. So Scott, anything to add on the Zoom?
No, nothing from here. It seemed to run pretty smooth. There's a couple of things I probably need to brush up on, but yeah, wasn't too bad.
Jeff? Do you anticipate our RENA numbers changing, depending on how the suit plays out? The small cities down south are suing the county about their RENA numbers being too high?
There was an appeal of the RENA numbers by four cities. That was settled. The board heard, heard that appeal.
I read the other day that it was appealed to the board. The board denied the appeal, so that the four cities are actually suing in district, I think, district court.
Okay, that's different then. That's outside the board appeal process. I hadn't heard that.
Yeah, I heard the same. Lemon Grove comes to mind, Lemon Grove.
Lemon Grove.
Maybe Spring Valley or?
Spring Valley.
They were all relatively small. I heard the saying that they filed a suit against Sandag, I think it was.
Yeah, was it? For the RENA numbers, because they all have numbers that are significantly higher than they had last go around.
Yeah.
Well, the, the appeal was by Lemon Grove, Solana Beach, Coronado, and I forget the fourth city. And what the board did in response to the appeal is they granted, I believe it was Coronado got a reduction based on their argument regarding military housing. The other cities did not get a reduction. In order to make up the difference on the Coronado reduction, the city of San Diego absorbed it, so no one else got an increase. We were worried that we were going to get an increase. Our number's still the same. From what I understand, even with the appeals, our April 15, 2021 deadline was unchanged. The board also sent a letter, along with SCAG and SECOG, two other regional governments, to the governor and asked him to give a extension of our RENA deadline, or pardon me, our housing element update deadline, given COVID, and the governor declined.
And the governor declined to give a, an extension. So again, we're April 21. We're on board. I think we may be a little late, but there's a 90-day grace period, as I understand. We may go into that grace period a little bit. That housing element update will come to this body. And I'll keep, thank you for the, the information on the lawsuit. I'll keep an eye on that and the ramifications of it.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Jeff, on the 18th for city council, I also heard that through the EDC's presentation, I think you gave to them, that you would be presenting a draft for the Southmore Hills community plan. Is that still on their agenda?
Given the election, the, we talked to the mayor, and who's the one who gave us the direction to come back with a draft Southmore Hills plan by one year of the North River Farms vote, which puts us in November. He agreed to have staff inform the council via other methods. And I'm not sure what that is exactly, but we have opportunities to send them memos. We do pass-through memos. We do the weekly update that gets extended out. Maybe we just do some kind of public outreach. So we are close to having a preliminary draft plan in concept, some goals and policies and action items for Southmore Hills. So I think what we will do is use one of those methods to inform them of what that is. We may come back in the spring after the election, so we'll keep you informed. But at this point, there's no presentation on November 18.
So, because we were trying to, you know, tell everybody that there is going to be a, like a presentation on the 18. So right now, it sounds like it might just be internal documents and such that maybe might have some information about what you guys are finding out and what the consultant is coming up with.
As I understand it, we will convey the same information that we are working on. It's just that it won't be through a workshop on November 18. And yeah, it will likely be some kind of internal document, a pass-through memo is the phrase this city uses. But that doesn't mean it won't be open to the public or available to the public.
Great, thanks.
Okay, seeing nothing else, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Nice job.
All right, yeah, great job.